All right, so all the select board meetings are ordered at seven o'clock?
And all the planning board meetings are ordered at seven o'clock. Very special.
So I thought before we get started, just to talk about what the objectives are for this meeting. I think Ray, Brian, and I met with Katrina and Angus a few weeks ago now. And just talked about ideally, we have a united front between the select board and the planning board as we bring this forward. You know, that may not be completely unanimous, but at least, you know, the general understanding of how each board feels and where we're working here. So specifically, we talked about whether we bring forward both sites or we choose one. And both in independent discussions, it seemed like we all agree that's better to choose one site to move forward with instead of bringing both. So tonight is really which one do we want to propose as the city of the overlay zoning district? In terms of the meeting, I thought we'd start out with just some updates on the economic study, traffic study, the MVPC assistance that Brian has been working on. And then just identify what the decision factors should be in choosing the site. We can just, I mean, I think we all know what they are, but I like just writing down so we see what we're working with. And then look at each site and apply those factors and just we'll have Professor Cook up on writing things down, you know, for each factor, the done property, what pros and cons, and the nap property. And then maybe we would finish up with next steps, talk about the public hearing. I know Katrina's been working on the fact sheet, just how we want to move forward from here to have a successful town. That's my idea of how the meeting will go. In terms of public comments, this is a very much a working meeting with the planning board and the select board. It is a public meeting. I would prefer not to have comments throughout the discussion, but perhaps at the end, we ask for comments from the public. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we start with updates? I think Angus, do you want to update on the economic study?
Sure. We, I think people are aware, we had entered our contract with FXM Associates, Frank Mahady, based in Matapoisa back in September, we signed a contract for a fiscal impact study. We included in the scope of the scenario of the full build of the zone, the eighty-seven units, as well as what we feel is a more realistic build out, which is thirty-five to forty units. Over the course of the fall, we provided them with responses to a number of data requests in terms of town budget, school budget, enrollment trends, school age, population, and some of the recent developments, which they used as a basis to estimate potential school enrollment. And a long story short, we did get the draft report uploaded this afternoon. Came in late in the day, so we haven't even read it yet, but we have received it. And part of the agreement with FXM is they will participate in up to two remote meetings to present their findings. So one thing we can talk about tonight is do we want to kind of save one of those, if you will, for once the planning board gets into a formal public hearing in the late winter? Or do we want to have come and present it in the nearer term to the boards or anyhow? But we have, we have that to work with. Obviously, if we need more, we can always modify the scope, but we have under agreement to have two meetings.
Okay. Did the planning board receive that?
Yes.
Okay. Has anybody looked at it? I didn't even, okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, kind of glanced through it, but yeah.
Okay. Katrina, do you want to update on the traffic study? When that's done?
Sure, so we do have an RFQ, draft RFQ, and it's almost ready to go. We're waiting to figure out which parcel they'll be doing the traffic study for. The traffic, the traffic study hopefully will be tailored to the lot that we choose. And it's funny because I have asked for our consultant engineer to help us with the RFQ, and he has sent it to TEC, which is in, in, can you think of it? It's a perfect, it's a perfect scenario because they weren't going to be sent an RFQ, and so why not help us?
That's actually great. I think it'd be a great, great thought, yeah.
Who is that?
TEC is, is doing the whole one thirteen.
Yeah, the corridor study and the engineer for the page pipe state crossing. And, you know, at the outset, it might, might seem like, well, why wouldn't we just hire them? Because they're already familiar with the corridor, they've been doing the traffic counts, they've been doing all the planning. But it's, it seems that having someone who's, who's, who's more like arms length seem to make more sense. And also, it's a workload issue. We have, I think, at this moment, three separate contracts with them, one for the corridor, one for the page pipe state crossing, and one for the middle high school, where there's a separate conceptual planning process. So from a bandwidth standpoint, you know, I want to keep them on, on task with the deadlines we have for the larger planning. So I didn't really want to bog them down with a fourth contract.
Right. Oh, yeah, I thought we were doing the traffic study on both parcels. And I kind of have a problem if we just narrow it down to one parcel. So I'm puzzled to hear.
And we could, we could.
I, I thought we were. I thought that was the idea, to look at it, both parcels.
I thought when we met, we realized that we wouldn't have the results of the traffic study in time for, for this joint meeting and.
Well, frankly, tonight, I have no intention of voting for a parcel. I thought this is an idea to trade information and see where the boards are and see where the thought process is. And I'm sure I can learn some things from you folks. But I for one, I'm not prepared to vote on anything tonight. And I would really like to have a traffic study done.
Okay.
I, I appreciate that. The only problem I run into here is logistics, because of where we are in the calendar, for whatever reason. Having the traffic study done on both parcels would help us make a, you know, would be more information about which, which parcel we recommend. But I don't think we're going to have that information for a while yet. And so that's, that's difficult.
But we should make it happen. We've been talking about this for quite some time. Traffic study was talked about last, when, when we met with the public last spring in the financial impact studies. So, you know, I, I know we've changed, you know, the, our planners and whatnot, but I think we need to put it out there and tell people we have a deadline and see who can respond.
But is the traffic, the results of the traffic study, do you feel like that is the criteria that the decision?
I think it's a significant criteria. And I think the public expects us to look at.
I'm not saying to not do it, but is that, do we really need the traffic study to choose the site? You're saying yes.
Unless somebody can convince me otherwise, then frankly, you know, a calendar problem doesn't work, in my opinion.
I agree with Brian on that. And my bigger issue is, I think last meeting was discussed that we're going to have this meeting and maybe assist possibly with picking a site. As I've said, I feel unqualified as heck to pick one of these two sites. One of the issues would be pretty significant is traffic, particularly on one of the parcels versus the other. But there are so many other issues. Topography, drainage, you know, so everything.
We wanted to talk about tonight. The idea was to, you know, as, as a larger group, discuss these things and share each other's expertise. Maybe a vote is unreasonable.
Well, putting the cart before the horse, if, you know, with Brian, with the traffic, if you have no idea, you roll the dice and hoping you are seeing the same thing the way a traffic engineer would. Same with all the other criteria, in my, my opinion. And this is one of the most significant decisions this town is going to make in a long time. And generally, we end up at this point hiring consultants to help us evaluate these things. But we're going to take this on, and I don't feel I personally have the capabilities, so I just.
Anne does have her hand raised.
Okay.
Anne?
Yes, hi, thanks. I completely agree with Brian and I guess with Chris too. I think one of the distinguishing features of these two sites is the traffic impact. Without the data on both, I, I think we're going to fight, you know, find a lot of pushback from people in town who have asked for this and have been told since last spring to expect it. I did glance through the fiscal impact studies. It's kind of predictable and, you know, one's about twice as big as the other and has about twice the impact of the other. And they're negligible impacts. So that is not going to really help anybody make a decision at all. But I think the traffic, if it differs, and I suspect it might, will be compelling.
So what other planning board members, Rick, what do you, I mean, I'm concerned about the timeline, but definitely.
Yeah, I don't feel like the traffic is going to be much different in front of NAPS or in front of DUMP. You know, what percentage of people come up to the center of town and turn on Maple Street? That's going to be, and, and, and at the corridor meeting, I remember that they did do some traffic studies that talked about about seven, seventy-five hundred cars coming through the west part of town, around ten thousand people, cars a day coming in from the east side of town. What more do we need to know? You know, the site lines are similar on these sites. I, I, I don't feel like this should be held up for a traffic study that is going to be like the fist, the, the study that Anne just said, you know, reading that, she, it was predictable and doesn't sway one, one way or the other. That's, I, I would be ready to move ahead without the traffic study.
Your opinion?
Yeah, I, I think I was also comfortable with going ahead without a traffic study, without having completed the traffic study.
You're comfortable with what, Rick?
With going ahead without completing, prior to completing the traffic study. A purr of right, really.
I mean, I, I would say the traffic generation numbers are not going to differ. They're running the same scenario on two different sites. What's going to, what's going to change from one to the other, which Deb pretty much alluded to, is which, what impact on what intersection? So I don't think including two in the scope is going to affect, I don't think it's a timeline issue. It was more just a kind of a financial management issue. We'll be paying twice, that's fine. If that's what people want, that's what we'll put out there. We'll probably get more interest from consultants because the fee will be roughly twice as large. So if that's a, if that's how these boards want public dollars spent, that's what we'll do.
What's the order of magnitude?
I'd be guessing.
The twenty.
In terms of level of effort, I mean, it depends how you scope it, obviously. And I think the scope that, that we started with, I think, you know, was overkill. It was like all this complex modeling. I think, you know, site distance is very important, trip generation. I think looking, looking at the underlying, what's allowed in the underlying zoning and what that would generate in trip generation, looking at proximity to both sites, which intersections are impacted, what's their level of service, turning movements, that kind of thing. There's going to be some overlap because the sites are relatively close together. So I think, you know, it's been a while since I hired consultants to do this in former jobs. I would think in terms of level of effort, you're probably looking at like ten to fifteen thousand per site. And so if you double that and have some efficiencies, maybe you're talking twenty-five thousand. To me, that, that's a lot, you know, that's fine, you know, if that's what the boards want. But that's not a small amount of public dollars. So, I mean, to me, things that are like most critical on, on site selection are going to be like site distance. And, and looking at each site and what the, what the site distance is and the visibility are going to be material issues.
Tim, did you have an opinion?
Yes, I had assumed we were going to do both sites. And so I'd advocate that we definitely, you know, look at both locations. I, I didn't really realize that we were, you know, morphing into focusing on the one site. I do think traffic is super important for this, you know, considering the number of units, you're going to have an concentrated area.
Yeah.
So I, I just want to reiterate where I stand on this. I think it would be ideal to have the results of the study before we selected a parcel. I agree with Brian that the public is going to want that. However, when it comes to logistics, I disagree, I think, with Brian. Because I think we're, we are on a hard calendar path here. And then from a pragmatic point of view, my experience in town, these are incredibly similar sites. They're both on the same road. They both have another road across from them. The sideline issues are remarkably similar between the two. What a developer would do to mitigate problems would probably, in the end result, make the results very similar between the two as far as actual impact on people. I'm uncomfortable with this whole business. I don't, I don't like it. But, and, and I, I like to put things off because I don't, I don't like doing things that I don't like. But I, I think that, you know, we come to the conclusion, we as a couple of boards here have a responsibility to give our, our best judgment to the public for their consideration. So although I agree that it's not ideal, I'd be, I don't think we should get hung up on it at this point. That's just one person's opinion.
Well, what if we proceed ahead and talk about all the other factors and then see how we feel at the end? And if people aren't ready to vote, then we can table it until we have the traffic study? Does that seem like a fair way?
Can I ask about the timeframe? And everybody's saying, I think the presumption is spring town meeting.
Yeah.
If you take the date of December thirtieth next year, that's when you, we could do it at the fall town meeting if it accommodated the traffics, if it, if it makes the sequencing better. You don't have to jam it into the spring town meeting.
I feel like we do. Because if something happens and it doesn't pass in spring, then at least we have a fall to try and fix it. If we wait till the fall and it fails, then we're out of this. Yeah.
Well, I, I might say there's, there's diesel, six, eight, ten other municipalities that did not pass, and their deadline is December thirty-first this year. So, you know.
I want one of them, no.
Well, no, I, I, I guess what I'm saying, I, I see some resolution pending. And I go back to, we're going to see what the Supreme Court issues. It, it may or may not change the dynamic. There may be some punitive action taken on these six to ten municipalities that did not pass. Raleigh being the one local one that I'm aware of.
Did Georgetown pass that?
If Switchen passed it, Raleigh didn't pass it.
Okay.
Vinson didn't pass it.
Well, the state's not going to hang you if, at fall town meeting, you have a class.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I appreciate it, but I'm not as concerned because I think we're going to know what happens to these communities, you know, what, what the state action is going to be. I'd like to get this right, and it, it just does not feel, I, I'm, I'm not clear why we feel the need to make this decision. And I, I think an idea of putting a bribe, you know, the information out there, seeing where you folks are and whatnot, will be helpful.
It just seems like we've been talking about this for a long time. And I feel like, let's just choose a site and strategize about how to move on.
Well, then, then I go back to, we've been talking about the traffic studies since last public hearings, and we should have done it, but we didn't.
Yeah, Brian, at, at the meeting we don't have, I thought that we agreed that we would just.
I did not agree.
Okay.
And I'd like to make that very clear.
Okay.
I, I, in, in no way did I go away thinking that we had agreed on, on, on that course of action. I, perhaps I misunderstood.
Could I, was the original reason for the traffic study to compare the two? Or was it something a resident brought up saying, I just don't like this multifamily district because it's going to create traffic? How much traffic is it going to create?
In my mind, it was either.
It was, yeah, I think there's a fair comparison and, and between two. Sure, there'll be more traffic than we, you know, we've had two developments in the last seven or seven years plus that had, you know, traffic and whatnot. So, yes, people are concerned about traffic in general, but I think also just how much, what this is feeling.
Now, I got, I got to say, when it comes to the towns that didn't pass it, presumably, they've got another shot at passing it before the deadline.
The deadline is December thirty-first, both the towns have.
But, but, you know, I don't think the state will decide what to do with these towns until 2026. So I don't think that.
They're on a different timeline. I think the ones he's talking about have a different compliance deadline of this December.
This year.
Because they're.
Oh, December, this year.
Yeah, we're in the Asian communities that we have an extra year.
Yeah. Raleigh, which have a train station in their town.
There you go. Okay, thank you. And then the other thing I was thinking though is that if, I think along the lines of Wendy here, if we bring something to the town in spring town meeting and it gets voted down, we'll have an idea about, well, we should know why it got voted down and have some ideas there. And we could take another run at it and follow and see why, if that's the district of the town. But if we put it off into the fall, then.
Yeah, no, and I agree, I, I'm in favor of trying to move to the spring town meeting. I, I, absolutely. But I, you know.
You just don't feel the same sense of urgency?
No, I mean, I, I have a parcel that I'm leaning towards, but I, I, I think the traffic may, you know, in, in, in a general discussion, may sway my opinion.
Okay.
But, but.
Right.
And, and so I, I think to your point, I'd like to have deals.
Let's get into the other stuff.
Into the other stuff.
Well, one of my questions is, are we missing any information to make the decision? It sounds like for some traffic is that. Anne, go ahead.
Wendy, yeah, I just wanted to say that I think we should move on to evaluating other things. But Wendy, you talked about getting this behind us so we could strategize. There's nothing in the site selection that's going to change. We can still strategize. We're going to strategize similarly, whichever site we choose. So I don't think we should feel like we can't start thinking about how to present in general and what kinds of points to make in regard to the law, its benefit to the town and so forth. We can do that in the absence of a final site decision.
Okay, yeah. All right, so in terms of legal stats, that was another update I had here. I don't think any of us have any new information on, on the Milton case or anything like that, right? Okay. MVPC assistance, Brian, do you want to just brief on, on what we're.
Yes, we had a meeting, I couldn't say we, it was Angus, Ray, myself, Katrina, with the executive director of MVPC and the community planning manager there. Those Gerard Whitman and Ian Burns. They're willing to, more than willing to help us, more than likely at, at no cost to the town. They feel they have enough sources of funds. And as we outlined to them, the, the idea of helping us in the public hearings as, as a local quasi-independent expert or whatnot to help field questions or whatnot, because they have worked with Newbury and Raleigh on their plans. And they may have been during Georgetown, I'm not sure. So they were going to put together just a brief document that kind of roughly outlined, you know, their, their scope and commitment. And they'll take the information on the financial and whatnot that Angus prepared last spring. They'll look at the fiscal impact statement and synthesize it into a kind of a short cohesive document for the public hearings, which late February, early March, whatever, that was kind of the timeframe that we talked about. They did say if we needed some additional funding, Mass-Homing Partnership is a pretty good avenue to go, but they did not think it would cover the traffic studies. However, they were very clear about that. So, yeah, I, I came away feeling, you know, we, it will be fine to utilize their expertise and talent to help us answer questions, perhaps, you know, in case the town's taxpayers think we're all biased or, or whatnot, that there's another voice. And they do a very good job in presenting.
Right. Yeah, the document they prepared for Newbury was very good.
Yes, that's exactly what we're working towards.
Right. So then the next thing I thought, if we just identify what these decision factors are, I mean, I, Katrina, do you want to write these down or do you want, I think writing them down on the board is helpful if you guys don't mind.
Let me just see if I can do something.
You got to hijack the.
If I can share the screen. I think I can take notes up there.
Oh, that'd be great. So we're not doing the old school marker on newsprint?
Well, then people could see him, yeah. You are an avocat. Oh.
Awesome.
Oh, this, I didn't even bring my cupcake.
That would be post stats. Isn't that the brand?
That is a brand, that is a brand. No, is there a way?
Wait, you're trying to read that?
Way, okay, well, I wanted to make that even larger, I can.
So, I mean, let's, do you want to just throw others that we think are decision factors?
Can I, can I throw something in here? On Saturday, I went to the Essex County Green Belt Conference on conservation and housing. And having interest in both of those areas, being a twenty-year member of the FANCOM and serving on the Affordable Housing Trust, that seems like the ideal way that we can present this to the town. My recollection of the public hearings that we held, the people who had concerns about, and I'm, I'm going to address the nap property for argument's sake. I have done more thinking about this particular property.
Deb, can you, how, can we wait till we talk about the specific properties to?
Getting the specifics, let me just say that, that the suggestions that Bob Wilbur, who is of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and who has dealt with these situations in a lot of towns that are facing this, suggested coupling housing with protection. So to me, that's an overriding consideration, and I think the direction that much of the town is going to want to delve into.
Thanks.
So I don't have the addresses memorized.
Well, let's, could we just first start with identifying what the factors are? Just simply like what criteria we think we should discuss?
Yeah.
So traffic impact obviously is the first one.
Okay. Utility, accessibility, I don't know if that's too broad, but.
Like water?
Yes, water.
Yeah.
So, well, water supply.
Are there other utilities as that can warrant? Probably not that we're concerned with.
Yeah.
Well, we can just say water, people worry about runoff, so there's stormwater.
No, that's different.
But we're thinking like drinking water.
Yeah, 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 that's why we have water supply, yes, and water supply.
Okay. So stormwater management is another one. And of course fiscal impact. In terms of, that covers a lot of things, right? Schools, public safety.
Right, just what we have, the results of the fiscal impact studies.
Yeah. One that I think has been discussed is the distance to town center or schools. I don't know that it's that different between the two parcels, but it is a factor.
The distance to the town facilities, yeah. Because some people could prioritize the facilities different.
Right.
And you got things like soils and septic runoff. I know that comes under stormwater, but well, not exactly, so.
Septic.
Well, because one parcel already has significant issues with runoff, so, you know.
Well, reportedly, we don't know that for sure. That's how it's been reported, but it's not.
They're fixing it today. Another one is likelihood of development.
That's what we talked about. I mean, do people think that's a reasonable consideration?
Not especially. Well, I think it, it comes up, meaning that some people would like us to, like, comply with MBTA with the understanding that the selected site is very unlikely to ever be developed. So I, I think of the two sites, I mean, one is very likely to be developed, and the other one, my understanding is the owners don't want it to be developed anytime soon. So, so that, I think, would have an impact with some people.
Yeah, I think it's out there, so we might as well talk about it.
Yeah, because it almost becomes a pool game to, to vote that parcel, you know, it's not going to get developed. See, now, now we're getting philosophical real fast.
Yeah. All right, what else? How about presentation? All right, what else? How about preservation of open space?
Yeah, activity to other town parcels, is what I was going to say, yeah.
Anything else?
The makeup of the land economy exists.
What do you mean?
Well, you've got a pond on one that's pretty nice, you've got a hill that's problematic on the other, you know, just the site itself, the site conditions.
Geography?
Geography, and one that, every, yeah.
Are you talking about the aesthetic value or the development impact of this?
Actually, both, I mean, how does it look now? What's it look like once it's done?
Okay.
Okay, so there's, so there's, uh, uh, impact on the view shed, there's something else I want to say here, a different way of phrasing it.
Preservation, yeah.
Aesthetics?
Visual impact.
One thing I would offer on that, uh, is I would, I would encourage people to think about, um, the anticipated development scenario if the zoning was approved relative to what's likely to happen if the zoning is not approved, not what could happen with the new, you know, proposed zoning versus today. Because one thing, you know, I've seen in, you know, twenty-five years of town planning is in eastern Massachusetts, if land is not protected, it will be developed. It's just a matter of time. So I think, I think looking at like what it is today versus, you know, townhouse development is kind of a false choice. It's kind of townhouse development versus what could happen in the underlying zoning. I think we even, we even. Is that a, is that a fair?
I think so. So how would you, what would you call that?
I, perhaps relative visual impact or 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 not just visual, I mean, it was more than that that Chris was alluding to. It was kind of, um, effect on sense of place, I don't know.
And everything, yeah, when you you go out onto the land and I've been on NAPS, and you walk out there and it's a very nice parcel, it's the surroundings out back are, um, open and exposed out on the land, you get a very.
But unless the town's going to require that as open space, that, you know, whether in, whether in two to three years or in ten to twenty years, it is going to be developed, unless.
I would concede every large parcel in town has that potential and you're going to have that reality, so that's why even so, you know, they're both going to get developed at some point. Mr. Dunn might not want it now, but it will. Um, all I'm saying, when you go up to the back of NAPS, which I haven't been on the back of DUNNS, you have a certain sense and essence of being out there, how nice it is. And that carries a value to any property that gets built out there. Also, the impact of what gets lost with the buildings. There's a lot that goes on.
What's it in, what gets lost with the building?
Yeah, when you start taking this land and putting the buildings on, how does that impact maybe all the abutters' views and their perspectives?
Ann and Tim, um, do you want to chime in here at all or?
Sure, I'll chime in first. Um, the conservation one, I just had a question. Um, it's a pretty general term. So we're talking about, um, natural resources there because there's also, you know, conservation of farmland, retention of farmland, things like that. So I didn't know if we wanted to clarify that a little bit more. It's a consideration.
Make it open space?
Yeah, that's, someone had mentioned open space. Yeah, I think open space is even different than preservation of resources too, you know, they're kind of related, but it is a bit different.
Those should not be a separate category?
For example, that, you know, there's that large wetland area and one of the properties and there's a lot of, you know, resources.
Natural resource preservation, which could include farmland, Tim?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right, any we're missing? I mean, one I've had is, um, multi-use potential. I don't know if there's a difference between the two in terms of, you know, multi-use development.
Sort of mixed use?
Mixed use, that's right, sorry, yeah. I knew that didn't sound right.
Right.
Again, it's the ones we're missing that will concern us the most.
All right, well, we got to work with what we know, so.
See, this is where I'm not, I'm not a professional when evaluating property, this is what is going to bug me.
But we are what we are, and we're the town's decision makers, so.
But the town had faith in you and elected you to this. No, no, it's like what directs the town and the G R O policy and how to get things done. We're not supposed to be micromanaging projects like this, in my understanding, I believe. So.
I think this is your job.
All right, so you can choose not to participate.
I, I, Chris, you have such experience in town. There's a lot of stuff that you know that the rest of us don't. Your opinion and and what you think of this stuff is valuable. That's my opinion. See, I'm not, like I said, I have not walked the back of Dunn's property. I don't even have a perspective on that.
I do.
Good point. So, I mean, there's, I mean, yeah, we could, we could take a look at any one of these things, right? And say, well, I'm, I'm not going to weigh in on that one because that's.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, so when issue, we're going to be? Is that word?
Why don't we just start at the top and go?
Can I, can I add something? Sure.
Well, but Chris, you were a little saying something. Okay.
Some aspect of of a public benefit, and and I concur that this natural resource area that is in back of NAP, which connects all the way out um, to Tewksbury and to Georgetown Road, um, this is a pretty pristine area, one of the few in town that isn't owned by the town, but I think warrants a lot of protection, and I think that there could be a lot of support for the development proposed, not going back any further into that land, um, and connecting with the other, um, undevelopable parcels. I don't think there's much agricultural use back there because it is wetland, pretty much.
Yeah. If we're throwing everything, if if I was in a room by myself and said, pick one, and you got to look at all the criteria, and somebody might say it's inappropriate, I'm not throwing it out there anyways. Not only the likelihood of being developed, but the parcel or the person doing it. Now, I know it's John Sakis. I was on planning work with John. I respect him tremendously. That, to me, with one parcel that I know, you don't know what's going to happen. You could get some mega-city developer coming up and throwing a bunch of garbage out there. So indirectly, that is a, if I do bar this, is a determining factor, and I think you have to consider that. The integrity of the person who can be overseeing the project.
But we don't know that for sure.
Now, they they sell to that big city developer.
Well, no, I, 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 property's under agreement. I know that much for a fact. I know he's involved with it in some fashion.
No, 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 I, I, I agree with you.
No, yeah, okay. That gives me the highest level of comfort on a parcel, if I have to, you know.
Yes, no, it's a good point.
John, so it's a good point.
And you could look at it the other way, as somebody who wasn't involved in this could say, oh, these two boards are in cahoots with.
That's one thing.
The old favorite.
You know, all right, I will say, I I went to the Rowley Town meeting, I live in Rowley, and, um, it was voted down. One of the big problems was that that one of the areas was being, um, superimposed over an area where a forty B was proposed, and so they were taking care that a forty B is going to happen there. And the developer worked with the town and said, hey, just put it here. That didn't go over well with the townspeople, but I will say that I have have talked to John. Um, and I don't think you you actually like some of the language in this overlay.
Not all, but I, as a developer, I see a lot of potential flaws.
So he had nothing to do with the language itself, you know, and that was the problem in Rowley. So there is.
Well, I I do think it's important that the public doesn't feel at all like the fix was in. Is that, that, I think that's, that's, that's going to upset people.
Yeah.
So I I think as as much as, uh, yeah, I think we need to to leave Mr. Sarkis kind of out of this, at least at at this stage of the game.
All right, why don't we just start going through, um.
So traffic, we don't know. Right? I mean, it's like, both both sites are going to be similar, and we don't know what's a pro and a con. You agree?
Not completely. I think, you know, we have traffic counts. I mean, just, I would think on the Dunn property, there's going to be more mitigation that's required for traffic safety. I, is that fair?
I think that's fair, yeah.
Does the ski hill coming down too?
And around the corner.
Yeah, the corner there too.
Yeah, which doesn't mean it's a negative, but it's just, it's part of it the developer would have to address.
So so tell me again, because that's Dunn up there, right?
Yeah, I should, yeah.
So, I mean, church is coming up a big hill, but I don't perceive Main Street itself as being a big hill. There's a little rise.
It's the corner.
I think part of what you're maybe referring to is that there's going to be an imperative to create a safe pedestrian connection from this site to the town center. There's not a sidewalk on the, uh, south side of Main Street. So you'd have, developer would presumably be required to get people safely across the street.
Which would mean either cutting the hillside.
That's true on both sites. They're both on the south side, where there's not a sidewalk.
So it's more like a natural connection to the town center. Here, yeah, I think you're you're probably right, and maybe the mitigation is the same, but.
Okay.
But as we're going down the rabbit hole, we're already starting to develop the site for the developers. They might look at this and say, this is garbage. I want to shift that road uh, to the east, and that facilitates my line of sights and my access. We don't know. Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I mean, both, both sites, the developers is going to work, you know, with the town and engineers to 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 mitigate things. But I mean, is it fair to say that the consensus here is that Dunn is somewhat more difficult?
I think we should just call traffic to be determined and move on. We're getting hung up on traffic.
All right, uh, what about water supply? I mean, I feel like.
With the study done, I said.
We we saw a study.
It favored NAPS with higher pressure because it's closer to a tank.
But it wasn't.
They said they were both acceptable, it was higher and more. Yeah, I think it's also the size of the piping too, you know, there's sections in the. The study we started a year ago was very clear that that was the preferable as far as water pressure.
Which one?
That, yeah.
What I, what I didn't understand from that is whether it implied that the developer would have to increase pipe size then at some point along Main Street, or is that fault to the town? I I didn't understand that.
That's an interesting thing to follow up.
In the, in the past, hasn't the developer been responsible?
Typically, but with this law, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, does it, does it automatically default to the developer?
I I put somewhat better for NAP. Is that fair?
Given what, yeah.
Given what we know, this is all for the matter.
Right.
Okay.
So what about stormwater management?
That's, you know, the engineers are going to look at that and take care of that on both sites.
Well, I think that's, you know, flinker and the sidewalks that we've done, take into account the fact that and and I always go back to the fact that there used to be a hill on that big flat spot that was used to close the dump on Georgetown Road. And the the water that's coming off from that steep slope reminds me of the Main Street property where the houses got built in the slope. There, there's a lot of pressure that's going to come out of it, especially when that's developed. I think this is an infinite easier, um, lot to, uh, and and the lot is much bigger than the plan shows there. That's just to the end of the open space.
Yeah, you you can't, you're not going to be able to, like, uh, star water medication.
You can't, you you can't, that's right. You need a detention basin or a retention basin to address it. Uh, but this, because it does a but, a large wetland area, um, uh, it it, you you've got room to do that.
I would just say, I think we should be careful about not doing the developer's work for them. I mean, it will be required. So I don't think we should make our, you know, choice based on how difficult.
And my, and that, my point is that the engineer is going to have to comply with state laws.
Right.
And restrict water coming off the site to have no impact on the abutting sites and on the wetlands. So I think this is a tough one.
Yeah, I I would say Dunn is probably a little more difficult because it's just the hilly terrain.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what they, the order of magnitude. Legally, the the water has to stay on the site, you know.
It has to come off the site the same way it always did.
Yes. But NAP is generally flatter. So I think it's probably, I'm. It's probably easier to deal with that than working within hillside of the other.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is on this list, we're thinking about the ultimate impact on the town, not which one is easier for the developer. And the developer is going to have to comply with the state laws either way, so, um, the stormwater can be managed.
What's that do?
Will be no impact on the town if they do it the right way.
So I'm I'm always skeptical of assuming that somebody can do it the right way. There will be events that you never anticipate that will happen and, or that most likely will happen at some point in time, and so I I I, you know, I'm sorry, I'm, you're a civil engineer, I'm a mechanical engineer. I assume things are going to go wrong. They, you know, so. Yeah, I I I appreciate that. Um, I mean, things do go wrong, right? Yeah. Um, you you do your best, but you're predicting the future.
Ann, did you want to chime in?
Yes, I do on both water supply and stormwater. Uh, water supply, I I believe what it said, going back to our, uh, old days, Wendy, is that the fire flows are better at NAPS because of the tank proximity. But in fact, I have read in, uh, numerous places in thinking about the M B T A Communities Act that all of those kinds of costs of infrastructure are not to be borne by the towns, but are to be borne by the developer. And we'll remember Chip Hall did a bunch of work for his development there on Main Street, I think for Ocean Meadow. Uh, you know, the town has kind of made a, a practice of, uh, getting upgrades to our water mains through developers. So I think I would say but for, and the same thing with the stormwater, it has to be dealt with, not our problem to solve. I think I would just write, uh, developer in both columns for both projects. I don't think that's really, uh, our bailiwick right here.
Okay, I think that's a fair way to do it. Does that reflect that it has to be, and it's going to be on the developer? All right, so I guess on fiscal impact, we're not ready to say, right, until we read the report.
Right, but I think it's quite equivalent.
I don't think there's going to be a distinction between the two sites.
Okay.
No, because they ran the same build-out scenario for both sites.
Okay.
Um, I think the only caveat I would, I would suggest to that is, the scope did not include any analysis of what, uh, of the fiscal impact relative to what would be allowed in the underlying zoning. Uh, that's something that did come up at the meeting we had, you know, a week or so ago with with Brian and Ray, you and Katrina. If we wanted to add that, if we wanted to engage an engineer to to kind of game out of what could happen in the underlying zoning to see the relative fiscal impact, you could see a difference of one being relatively better or not, but we, right now, that's not part of the scope.
Okay.
Does everyone follow what I'm saying there?
Yeah, like, if if we did a convention, if if a conventional subdivision was done on Dunn, right, and you compare that to what this sort of development would be. And then you compare it with, um, just a, just a few big houses, so. But I I think that that's important for the public hearing, for people to see that, you know, these alternatives exist. But since we're talking about roughly the same amount of acreage, um, I would assume that roughly the same sort of conventional development could be done on both parcels.
What were you meaning?
Meaning that if you did a conventional development on, on Dunn.
A subdivision?
Yeah.
You couldn't get thirty units of subdivision?
No, like you could maybe get fifteen or twenty, let's say, or a bigger number.
Well, yeah, you're like, what, what do you?
I I I sold the property behind it, I sold Nathan Dennis the property abutting it. It it is a very problematic lot, and and where you put in five or six perks for septic systems, the the slope of it is extreme, um, it it, there's a lot of reasons why that would be very tough to develop conventionally.
I I, yeah, I think you'd have trouble, I think you'd have trouble with individual septic on a full subdivision where, you know, not a shared system.
Yeah, I think, well, on both sides, I think you'd have, you'd have difficulties.
Um, yeah, but I I don't think you, on the nap, you'd get anywhere near, I don't think you'd get twenty separate units in there without a shared system. I mean, if you're talking about pure subdivision, somebody's got a, um, what was that, that sea, sea zoning?
Yeah.
I I, you could probably get, I don't think you could even get ten in 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 that.
No.
I don't, on the septic.
Well.
And that's, that's a false ability question, I guess.
The problem with fiscal development, again, we're going down that rabbit hole that's never going to get you anywhere.
So what do you suggest instead? I mean, somehow we've got to hash this out. We can't hire a consultant to do it, we have to decide.
Why, why don't we, why don't we keep going?
Yeah. Yeah. So fiscal impact, that's to the town, not to the developer, right? So.
Yeah, I I haven't read, but I mean, I I I presume that was, do we need another policeman or?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it was, is it revenue positive or revenue negative?
You don't.
For the town.
Yeah, yeah, based on, yeah, yeah, school kids and.
Right.
It said it was positive. It it did an evaluation of the of, it did look at its scenarios compared to. Um, other developed areas in town and decided that. Uh, these kinds of developments were more advantageous financially to the town, less fiscal impact.
But but no distinction between the two?
No.
No, really, it's just a matter of of math, you know, once. Say thirty-eight times two is about one to two, so one had like five new students and one had ten, and so, no.
All right. What about location, you know, walking distance to?
This this one, you know, when I came in, I was like, well. Dunn is clearly better because you're right there, but then if you've got kids, it's a longer distance, you know.
To the high school.
To the high school, even if you don't have kids, you might wanna go watch a football game there, that sort of thing. Whereas NAP is kind of right in between. So on that one, when it comes to walking distance, I think NAP has the edge there.
Well, they really have the one else.
Yeah, I I mean, closer to the library and.
Yeah.
True.
Done, I mean, I think that one is is better.
Because of the the. Action, Action Cove and.
Yeah.
Gorgory Band concert. Well, you know, if you're looking for things, yeah, I I.
Pizza parlor.
Your pizza won't get too chilled walking, walking back.
So do I want you to say better?
No, I don't think it's better.
In terms of walking distance then?
No. I I I think little kids don't walk to school, junior high and high school kids.
Well, we'll talk about the library and the playground and.
Well, you can't have it all. It's one of them. You can have little kids and and, you know, but um.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think and and and.
You so do you, I I'm I'm, do you think, do you think NAP is better or Dunn is better?
I think NAP is better, and I think.
Really?
Again, the houses are gonna be at the top of the hill. It's it's a more difficult. Um, place to walk away from.
Well, actually, I don't know if families are kind of on the level.
They, you know, they're kind of on the bottom of the hill. If you want. We should.
They're they're not up that much.
All right, so it sounds like.
I actually, I I think, I I tend to. I think that Dunn probably has a is a better overall walking. If if you're expanding that driveway, forgetting all the other stuff. And yeah, you're closer to that, you're closer to the market, you know. Although the other day I just see Dick pushing coming back from the food by the to his house there, so.
Let's just, let's just take kind of a straw poll here, just for the sake. So how many people feel like Dunn has the edge? I want to say clearly better.
And and what's your guy, just walking?
And just for the the people living there, being able to walk to places that they wanna walk to.
I I I I vote for that, yeah.
Okay, now, do you feel NAP is better?
Ray, I'd like to split my vote.
Okay.
I wanna, under under NAP, I wanna write good and under Dunn, I wanna write better.
That sounds fair. So that's not split. Tim, what do you think?
Was that to me?
Yeah.
Oh, I I definitely thought that Dunn was better.
Okay, so, uh, what was this?
I think the room is leaning Dunn.
I think we all need to go run up and down the hill two or three times and then and then reconsider.
All right, septic, I feel like that's another developer.
Yes, it is. It's their problem.
Okay.
But is there objective information that's knowable in terms of the soil conditions on either?
We had a pause of in the, this this goes way back in in a tour that we took. Around town with Ross and Tug. He opined, and I think he knew some more recent info, that Dunn, that probably that NAP had a better. Had better results. Um, and Dunn, he qualified, he hadn't been out there for a while and he thought, but he thought it was more problematic. But I I.
But again.
Talk to him.
Yeah.
But again, the developer would determine the best system for the visitor product.
Yeah, I don't I don't think that that's, I don't think we can vote on them.
Yeah, yeah.
I I think, I think it 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 NAP is infinitely easier to develop than Dunn.
But we don't care about that then.
We do, it's not indicative.
It does, I think desire, something that's layered on top of this is desirability. Go put my developer hat on, desirability and perceived value to the developer, right? And they come in and it's incredibly harder to put septic in there to, uh, you know, to do, I mean, any of these utilities, right? That that leads to the fiscal impact to the town as well. If they build it, it's more desirable, more valuable. In theory, right, the site, if they can build more units. It's gonna lead to a greater fiscal impact on the the town, right, from a positive standpoint versus last year again. So I think there's there's a layer of kind of desirability and value that we're, we haven't really talked a lot about.
Yeah, and one of the problems with that is that you're gonna find, I'm guessing. A fairly even split between people who are like, we got a problem of housing in the United States and Massachusetts and in West Newbury. So we wanna pick a site where we get the most houses and we do our best, we do our damnedest to to. We do our bit as as well as we can. And then you're gonna have other people who are like, this is forced on us, this is government overreach. And so I wanna pick a site that's gonna end up with the fewest houses and the least impact on the town. And 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 now we're into those intangibles that come out of town meeting, so.
And if this leads into the next factor, which is likelihood of development.
Well, likelihood of development, you know, I I think we can just say, you know, imminent.
But is that, is that a benefit or not? I guess that's what I mean. It gets back to the people who really don't want. A development as a result of this overly district.
Can someone, can someone clarify what this means? Are we talking about, is it likelier that the MB MBTA? Project would be built out or are we talking about what will happen otherwise?
Something likely ensued on that.
So we're talking about a non-MBTA development, is that true?
No.
That's likelihood refers to.
MBTA.
And then and then Ray is Dunn then nothing in the near term?
I would say Dunn is in the future.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, yeah.
But also, if it isn't chosen as the MBTA parcel, it will be developed. Whether it's Dunn.
At some point, probably.
Now, now.
But you know, oh, yeah, now, well, actually.
Right, it's going to be developed even if it's not MBTA.
Right. Right.
Okay, so it's a sooner rather than later, okay.
Yeah.
And that has more to do with it being on the market. Is that mostly what people are saying?
Yes, and and the fact that we've heard that the Dunn family is not interested in developing their parcels.
Okay.
So even if it was chosen, likely it would become an MBTA.
Okay, so this isn't likelihood because of desirability or anything else, it has purely to do with the attitude of the current owners. Got it.
Yeah, yeah. All right, open space protection, I think Deb has mentioned the connection with, well, I guess that maybe that's natural resource.
Well, the, you know, the back part of NAP.
Which goes well off the page.
Is is. Naturally necessarily protected because it's wet, because it's wet, right?
And with the town parcel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that.
I think the front part of that property too, Ray.
What's that?
I say, I think the front property that there too, the poppy field and everything, I mean, that's. Some nice open space there that I think there's some desirability to protect versus the other site, which you. You know, I can't really even see the site, so I'm not even sure what, you know, it's all open now, it's farm, basically, but. You know, I think for opens, if we're talking about open space protection, you know, I would think the NAP. Property has more potential.
But haven't we, haven't we established a similar building envelope of about, let's just say, eight acres on both? And therefore, isn't the rest of it all going to become open space either way?
If it's usable open space, it's a question of, you know, the relative value of it, right? You know.
Right, well, in that case, NAP is all wet in the back. But there's some protected that's not wet, right? Because we're only getting eighty.
I mean, in this, in the scenario that the consultant put together, there would be. A significant amount of open space right up against the street.
Yeah.
It's part of the use case with NAP.
Right.
With Dunn, the top of the hill would be protected, but as far as the use case is concerned, it would be less noticeable of people coming by.
Okay. So, I don't know. Those sound kind of similar.
Yeah.
I was just thinking the, I was more thinking like the existing open spaces. That are there, if we're talking about truly open space and not agricultural land, um, you know, that the NAP has more. Has more valuable kind of open space resources on it.
Are you talking visual, Tim?
Well, the visual definitely in the front, absolutely, Wendy, and then in the back, you know, the protection of the wetlands area, that may.
There's a lot of ecologically productive land at the back of Dunn.
Yep.
Excuse me, yeah, or it, because it backs up. Um, you know, effectively, it backs up to the to the wetland that is formed, that the pond was formed. On, you know, what was historically Galloway's property, it was, that was, uh, development, right, was gifted to the town twenty-five years ago.
So does that make it more or less. Um, desirable for MBTA overlay?
Uh, well.
I mean, it's kind of the.
Yeah, well, what actually I look at, I say actually more because. We're making productive use of some land, you know, human productive use for some land, but the other is clearly then going to be. Ecologically productive, protected, protected.
Is is one of the factors that if if managed properly, that development of one of the sites could provide improved. Public access to lands, to protected lands. That maybe right now it's it's not developable anyway, but effectively there's no public access to it because it's all privately owned.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Where where it's developing the front portion, you could have a public, you know, sidewalks or or trailies that would improve accessibility. Not just to the backland, but to anything that buts. It's a question, not a statement.
Yeah, I think that's right, because the town parcel is landlocked right now. There's no way.
Right, and and is this actually about that idea?
It does, yeah.
So.
I think we need to look at the, yeah, we need to look at the maps to see what's abutting what. We're kind of all being a little slightly fanciful here, I think.
The map or maps?
No, I know for sure that it abuts town land.
There's, there's a little parcel, a little landlocked parcel.
Yeah.
Okay, and what, but what about Dunn? Does that abut any of the? The back of that new development and thence to, you know.
Angus is pulling out my map.
It it abuts Nathan Dennis.
Yeah.
To the east and um, a a fabulous house. Um, on a long driveway that you can't see from Maple Street.
Okay.
Um.
But no open space?
At eighty, at forty-two Maple Street.
I mean, no, um.
No public, no, no, no public space.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Ray's host, so I I can't do a screen share, but is this, is this the land you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
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 Okay. So right now, there's no public.
Right, there's no. All right, visual impact?
Well, I would say that um, NAP would have more.
Good or bad? Good, better, different.
Well, I mean, if you if you like the way the the buildings look, then it would be positive, but. If if you don't wanna see buildings, then Dunn would be better.
That's true, from Main Street visually. They've left almost all the Main Street frontage undeveloped, it looks like.
That's what I'm saying, so so, oh, oh, you're saying.
On now, yeah.
Yeah, but now is relatively.
Again, this is not.
I realize that, but but I love the fact that they did leave the streetscape.
I think Deb just wants to vote right now.
I'm sorry, I feel pretty strongly about that.
All right, just humor me. You just have to try to, you know, have some kind of logical. All right, what about the pottery? Any thoughts on that? Would this be a developer issue too? It could be, I guess. I think you were talking more about, unless you want a sledding him.
Well, but if we doesn't. We designate an area that they can build in, then no, it it's only somewhat up to the developer. It's gonna be within that area.
Yeah. So I guess this is what Ray was saying, that in Dunn, you have that hill, so it's kind of blocking. You know, what goes on in the back. What what did you, what were you after, Chris, when you brought up the topography or the way the land looks now?
Just to consider, first thing you just said, it's sort of, jump me there, you said you have the hill. You could have, the developer says, I'm gonna take the hill away and flatten it out. I mean, years ago, they did that at the Burlington Mall. That was a hill. They sold the lumber off it, they sold the soil and then built Burlington Mall. Everybody thought they're out of their minds. That's not unreasonable, so it's just a consideration.
Brooklyn took down the hill.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, by the.
It was a field, yeah.
Was that to provide visibility in the field?
No, I think it was Logan, right? Didn't they, didn't they bring the silver Logan?
It was economic. They sold the hill and the ground to a contractor called, with his name Logan. In exchange, they got enough money to build two fields and a dog park.
Gotcha.
So, that was.
All right, so nothing's perfect, permanent.
But so the topography, I mean, you've already got. This parcel creating drainage issues, that's what I'm getting at, whereas the other one's pretty flat, it's not gonna, you got that. Is it more attractive? Some people, myself included, I like living on a hill, but if you, you know, it's just another consideration of the property and the parcel, it's just.
Yeah.
I'm so.
All right, so what about impact on the butters? Seems like they were pretty equally represented at the public hearing.
Yeah, all I'm I'm thinking is the number of the butters. Uh, forgive me, Deb, I'm just trying to be objective here. The number of butters to NAP.
We got ten on Maple Street.
I I think there's more impacted with that.
Yeah, it probably is, because you got Merrill Street and the houses along that side of Merrill Street.
Yeah, but you know, Deb's counting them up here and.
Well, I think if you drew the old five hundred foot circle on who you were gonna send a letter to, you'd have more at NAP.
This this surprises me, but it's actually almost the same number really of of butters.
By by radius?
But even if you by radius across the street, I mean, I think that's what you have to look at. Not just direct property.
Churches across.
Most of the people on Maple Street that are, I mean, the the hill rises up behind their blocks and they they're not gonna see anything.
Yeah.
Right, no, I think NAP, if you consider real radius. I think it's more at NAPS, but, yeah.
All right. Uh, natural resource conservation, is there anything additional here that we didn't talk about under the open space?
Um, you know, I don't think we really talked about um. Preservation of agricultural land, at least it don't get me spoke about that specifically. And, you know, on Dunn, although, you know, all the times lived there, I've never been up on top of that hill, I don't know what the fields look like. Um, but, you know, they are, I believe, agricultural fields. And behind the, you know, the NAP property is. I I don't think it was agricultural. It was maybe horticultural, but, you know.
But again, that's subject to the owner. I mean, you know, five years ago, ten years ago, we would have said that NAPS was a productive horticultural use. And then they stopped.
Well, I was making the distinction between horticultural and agricultural, you know, agricultural, I think of as a. To me, at least, it'd be somewhere conceivably you can produce food and.
Yes, yes.
Pretty things to look at.
Right, but but they haven't been doing that for years now, so it's an owner thing.
Neither of these were chapter, right, so, right? Neither one were in chapter sixty-one.
No, no. What about mixed use potential? Seems like probably the same.
Somewhere, yeah.
Yeah. All right, any other public benefits?
I would, I would ask, I guess, a question on that. Is that, is that a positive or a negative? Like, is that part of the?
Mixed use?
Yeah, because I think the the zoning, um, right now, neither of the sites are zones commercial.
Yeah, I don't know why.
But wasn't mixed use proposed as in in these designs?
So that might be another thing to deal with. I mean, both have. Both have history. Of being marketplace areas, yeah, but when you have a change of use, you lose that.
But if if the area is being rezoned, what would prevent it from being rezoned? But if, if the area is being rezoned, what would prevent it from being rezoned, um, with some level of mixed use? I mean, I look at naps and, um, this town could really use a little cafe where people could sit down and have a cup of coffee.
I love it, but I, I, I think that.
Hasn't happened.
Whether.
I mean, we can't force that to happen, but we could facilitate it and make it possible.
I think that that would, that would be a, another issue, another type of rezoning, right? Could you include that as part of, as part of the overlay?
It's allowed.
Yeah. I don't know that.
It's a permitted use.
I don't know if you want to though, because I feel like under the MBTA, uh, legislation, it be, you know, it's as a right, which so is site plan, but, um, I think if you were writing zoning with the intent of allowing commercial, you might well have that a special permit process, whereas the MBTA zoning, it's kind of as a right, I'm correct? Katrina, am I wrong on that?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a permitting.
No, I know that, but I'm saying from a management standpoint, you know, even if the town's objective was to, uh, facilitate commercial in one or the other location, might it prefer to do that through amending the underlying zoning rather than through an overlay, just because of the kind of streamlined process through the MBTA zoning, which, which wouldn't give the kind of, uh, special permit.
I mean, as it stands now, forgive me here, I'm about to embarrass myself, but, you know, that happens, um, as we stand now, there is some, you can go to the town's special permit in a residential area and ask for a business.
Yes.
Right? So you could do that here as well.
That's something.
Only a home-based business.
Yeah.
Um, only a home-based business. There was a proposal that went to town meeting a couple of falls ago to allow a commercial pro, proposal and residential zoning, it did not pass. There should be more of us here to remember that.
I wasn't gonna bring it up.
Yeah, that has to do with Silver Saylor's building.
Right, 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 okay.
Okay. All right, um, with the board members' permission, I'd like to allow people that are here to give them one or two minutes if they have an opinion on which site, is that allowable or acceptable?
Sure.
Okay, before we start discussion.
Sure.
Rob, I know you were looking at, how to make a comment.
To Angus's point that both parcels will develop out, um, which is true, um, I, I think you should consider your cost the developer has to assume, more difficult site, they need, they need to sell more units in order to make up for the more difficult, you could find Dunn developing out more than nap. I'm not of the viewpoint that the goal here is for this town to build out as much housing under MBTA as might happen if Dunn is the site. I would ask you to consider the opposite of what Angus proposed, is would Dunn not be better building out under the zoning that we've crafted for this community?
Right, right, I think this, the, the new MBTA zoning or?
No, 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 it comes existing, the zoning that we really do ourselves and that the town has voted on.
Gotcha.
I think that's what Dunn should build out on there. I also, therefore, what we may be actually debating without knowing it is Dunn might build out to the max, nap might not build out to the max. I would also say that the traffic concerns, I'm just at delivering pedestrians across the street, I think that a traffic study in my mind most likely would show that you're gonna create issues in the downtown area because of all of the, the major roads that are coming together at one spot, plus commercial, plus parking, illegal parking, but parking nonetheless. If, if something goes on at nap, I believe that you're gonna find that that's presenting much less of an issue for, than, than our already overloaded downtown area with all the issues it has, I know we're doing a hard study, but I, I would just caution you about the Dunn property, I, I think it's problematic to build on, more costly to build on, what will happen there will be much bigger than that, and I'm not in favor of, I, I'm in favor of additional housing in town, we have to comply with MBTA, let's make our exposure, I'm so glad you settled on just one site, because doubling up would have been really wrong, I would like to see our exposure in, in what the state wants us to do be as limited as possible.
Okay.
Question to that.
Sure.
Um, Robert, are you talking about the Dunn perhaps, uh, being rezoned as business?
No, 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 I'm talking about letting Dunn be.
But it's, it's in residential right now.
Yeah, it will build out, it will build out, but I would prefer it to build out under our current town zoning, not what the state's wanting to build out on that though.
Would you be?
Okay, that's, that's all I want.
I've, I've always thought, and maybe we, in my tenure at the planning board, we've talked, kind of extend the business zone to who the Dunn parcel.
Well, I'm, I'm not going there, I, I'm presuming that the discussion right now is Dunn residential.
It's a weird part, it's a weird.
I'm not looking to expand that.
But, but, you know, but, well, I, I think that's, that's an interesting, yes.
We also say build out as town zoning, could get surprised and get a forty B in there too.
Yeah, but again.
They'll have a whole nother.
And, and he, anybody, any developer that wants to come in undone, you know, is gonna have, is gonna have that spreadsheet open, is gonna be doing earthwork calculations, number of units, the ten percent equationary, go through all these calculations and hit that button and probably confirm his or her all, hunch already, that this is profitable, this isn't, one way or the other, or the only way it's gonna be profitable is if I can get thirty-eight units in there and, and, uh, and then I break even, so I need to get in, you know, forty-five to make it worth my, my while, kind of, I mean, that's, that's all spreadsheet stuff, I don't, I don't think that, I don't, I don't think that either of these parcels is gonna, if, if MBTA were on both of these parcels, as we've discussed often, just because of all the subject stuff, you're not gonna be able to get, you know, build out, I don't know what's in your mind for build out, but it's not gonna be that kind of density, you know?
Well, as far as traffic.
If I just, if I just get your name out just for the notes.
Bob.
Bob.
Yeah, it is, um.
And your address, it's a Tommy requirement, name and address of the people.
Vigilance. Is, um, away from my house. Is the traffic by Dunn's is gonna be pretty bad, Church Street, the kids coming across on Merrimack and going home over to Merrimack, two or three hours a day is tremendous, cut throughs coming off, you know, all the truckers bouncing across the bridge.
And your ways.
Coming down Bachelor Street and jumping on ninety-five south and four ninety-five north or whatever, they're taking the cut through, thanks to the ways and Google, you know, I see them all the time, I mean, coming up down Church Street, my house there for a while until they kind of fixed the bump there from the water, my windows were gonna fall out of my house for Christ's sake, but that's another issue, but, um, the only way I can see, you know, and it is on a curve, is to put a stoplight or something, which would be probably kind of nice, because people come up that road doing excessive speed, I can say, at times, not Church Street, I'm talking about Main Street.
Oh, yeah.
And now when you walk on Main Street, you know, I come up, I went to turn left to go into Newburyport or something, I'll sit there for five minutes waiting for cars to go by, you know, it's, the traffic is tremendous nowadays compared to thirty years ago, for Christ's sake, and, um, the naps, you know, the, was it Pleasant Street?
Pleasant Street across the street.
There's.
Pleasant, yeah.
Yeah, they're probably not half as busy if that, of Church Street, okay? But the Dunn property, that they developed it, somebody gets the developer, they're not gonna put in a lot of houses, they're gonna put in master houses, and they're gonna be going for two million dollars a piece, that way they can make money, because houses in this town and all up in here anyway, Newburyport and everywhere else, average house in Newburyport went, just over a million dollars a week, couple of weeks ago. You know, this is gonna happen here, it already is for that nap, you know, they tell me what my house is worth and I wanna choke on it, right, I'll, I'll say, mm-hmm, and so that's gonna happen here, so you're gonna be getting, when the developer moves in, he's not gonna be building a lot, he's gonna be building big.
So is that better or worse for traffic?
For traffic, it's better, because instead of having forty, forty-five dollars, then you're gonna have ten.
Wendy, if I, if I try just to raise point, I'm glad you have confidence that it maxes out a certain amount, my experience with developers is good and bad, and some of them actually could end up trying to go beyond what, what you and I would look at as the spreadsheet number, it, it could be fifty, it could be sixty, it could be seventy, we don't know that on the Dunn property, we do know that on the nap property, that's my point, that's limiting exposure, you know the end result, you don't with Dunn, it's a crapshoot, that's all I'm saying.
All right, is anybody else on my name, can you see what you mean?
Uh, let's see, Wendy?
How about, yes, you're not a West Newbury resident, right?
No.
Um, how do you feel about?
I'd love to hear from you.
But objectively, as a planning board member, that we'll have to answer for our decision, do you feel it's appropriate?
I think them as a West Newbury resident.
Okay, what do you mean, right?
We'd like to tap into his expertise, but he's not a resident of West Newbury.
Well, so you don't let residents speak at meetings?
Well, he doesn't have the right to speak.
No, but I, I'd love to hear anybody's input, whether it's a resident, non-resident, expert, I mean, I'll check someone else.
Could I suggest just explain his background and be open? Okay, would you like to explain your, your, your interest in this particular conversation prior to making your?
I have a purchase and settlement to, to buy the nap property, I'm a developer for many years now, and I've built and developed and sold properties of this nature since my twenties, um, former member of the planning board and many other committees in town, uh, and I'm not really gonna speak to, uh, some of the obvious things, I wanna speak to some of the things that, uh, are, are obvious to a developer, that might not be obvious to a person on that side of the table, um, the biggest one is the intertwining of all of these matters together, that's what we as developers have to deal with all the time, we have to weigh every single, every single facet or consideration in light of the others, and everyone has an effect on others as well, so the, the biggest item that I've heard, uh, discussed today was visual impact, so let's talk about slopes, slopes have a visual impact when developed, they yield things like retaining walls, they yield things like shortcuts and fills that are not natural, they yield much more in the way of drainage basins that are not particularly attractive.
You mean retention?
Right. Uh, poor soils do the same thing, they require, that necessitates greater detention basins as well as larger septic systems, which are raised unnatural looking items. Uh, and then the, you know, the order of magnitude of the, of the infrastructure needed for a project really drives what you need to do on the project of it, so, you know, more infrastructure means you need more units to, to justify that, in this case, the land cost is one of the lesser components today with, with roads as expensive as they are, uh, and particularly, you know, when they don't have a second way in or out in our very long, might necessitate a double barrel road at the, at the, at the front end of the site, for example, uh, and then with regard to likelihood of development and with regard to the need for housing, it's been stated that the purpose of this is at the state level driven by, uh, economics, that we're losing people to other states simply because they can't afford to live in Massachusetts and our businesses are suffering, um, I can tell you that the likelihood of, of a nap property being developed is as good as it gets, if this doesn't pass, I will be building something there that will look very much like what an MBTA project would look like, it does not affect the site as radically as it does the Dunn property, again, considering everything involved, slopes, shape of the property, location, everything, um, so, yes, there's a likelihood that, um, uh, the, the nap property is going to be developed, so the visual impact is already unfortunately gone, there's, there's going to be a visual impact with the nap property, so it might, uh, I think it would be, it's relatively imminent, why, what the benefits are, we're gonna have a project there and we could take care of the MBTA zoning at the same time.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm looking.
Oh, lastly, so, there's been a bunch of protests done on, uh, on nap property, those are public record, yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at, at the Zoom screen here, and we've got a number of people that, uh, are in the meeting, I don't know if any, if, if you can hear me, you can raise your hand and then we can see that you wanna talk, if you're not able, if you, if you can't figure that out, you can just unmute yourself and speak up and we can recognize you.
Hey Ray, this, this is Brad, three forty-seven Main Street.
Hi Brad.
Hey, um, question for those in the room, um, a variable I'd like to hear the, the boards discuss, which parcel is more politically volatile in town? Or another way to look at it is which parcel is more likely to succeed at town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was part of the butter conversation.
Well, I, I, I.
No. Do you have an opinion on that Brad, is that why you're asking?
Um, no, I, 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 I'd like to hear your opinion, what you, which, which one, I don't think anybody's really said, I think this parcel is more likely to succeed. I don't think that, that the po, political dis, discussion has really occurred and the political calculus behind selecting a parcel, um, but you can care, it's your will to take it up or not.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't know that I can really make an educated comment on that, I'm, I'm not really sure, other than people who do not wanna see any development at all as a result of this.
Well, you're all elected officials, you run for office, you're politicians, so, you know, there's, there's some calculation there.
No, I, I, I think, I think Brad brings out a good point, but that's, yeah, I, I, I think that that's more speculation than I'm comfortable hazarding.
So, the other, the other piece is, um, there, the, the variable, um, to consider would be prime egg land, uh, which, which parcel has better soils, um, for.
Agriculture.
Yeah, 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 right.
And how would that relate to which parcel we put the overlay district on?
Well, there is a discussion about whether or not it's horticultural or growing food, and the point is, um, when you're evaluating egg properties, you want to understand the quality of the soils for, for agricultural production. when you're evaluating egg properties, you want to understand the quality of the soils for for agricultural production. And if you were valuing farming, you would protect the parcel with the better agricultural soils.
But in this program, we're not protecting, we're we're choosing where to put the overlay district. We have no power over what happens on it.
I I it's just, it's just a Wendy, when you started this, you you asked what what are some variables for for the for the people around the table to consider, and I'm just trying to help you refine it a little bit more.
Yeah, I, were you here in the earlier conversation when we talked about it?
Yeah, I was. I didn't hear anybody say this, I looked at the soils map, this site has the better soils. Uh, that's what I would do.
Am I the only one who remembers that dirt came off from here? There's no top soil. That whole lower section, there are some, I can't believe that we haven't taken a sidewalk and walked up there. I know it. What could we get an invitation for Mr. Doug to walk?
It's dark, you won't see it. I gotta show.
This is the problem with us trying to guide with most sites.
All right, Rick. I mean, Chris, whatever your name is. Is there anybody else uh in the waiting room that or on the zoom?
Thank you, Brad.
That would like to comment?
There's Linda, Carl, Adam.
Oh yeah, this is Carl. Can you hear me okay? Um, so I'm Carl Mosley, one seventy-five Main Street, Napsa Butter, and also the owners, the marshals are my in-laws. Um, I, speaking for them, they fully support the state's program for the MBTA zoning. They wanna do what's right. They feel that West Newbury should do what's right, and in the interest of visual impact and open space, we also feel that an MBTA zoning would be a little bit more condensed and allow for a better visual impact for the town. So it wouldn't be worse. We feel it would even be better than current zoning. So I think you should take these things into account.
Thank you, first girl. All right, boards, what do we wanna do here? We do one way for the traffic? Is anybody ready to vote tonight? I am, I could vote.
And I'm I'm sorry, Wendy, this is this is Dennis Lucy had one one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's okay. I I didn't couldn't get the mute. So, three thirty-four Main Street, current zoning board member and prior planning board member. Um, has, this is, I don't, I think the answer is probably no, cuz um, I don't think we have the resources to do this, but have, and I missed the first portion of this meeting. Have any yield plans been done under the zoning, under the potential zoning of what each property would um, could potentially yield? And I'm thinking about Brad's question about which property might be more agreeable to a voting membership.
Well, we we had talked about uh getting a yield study um done on a parcel that we come forward to the town with. No yield study has been done on both on on both parcels by the same person. I'm guessing that Mr. Sarkis would have a good idea what the yield would be without the MBTA zoning. But uh, no, we don't, we don't have the same number from an independent entity. Dennis, if I could just clarify, when you referring to year yield plan, you referring to under the underlying zoning or under the potential new zoning or both?
Uh, both. I'm just, I'm thinking of people who would be in favor of this process, but also people who wouldn't be in favor. And if um, one of the things that they may base the calculation on would be, oh, this is great, it's adding more more housing units, or oh, this is terrible, it's adding too many housing units. So.
A yield study is sort of a term of our, no, I I I I know, yeah.
Okay.
No, I was asking his specific interest. I I
Has he seen these proposed?
Yeah, have you seen the proposed or or the potential um build outs that the uh planning board consultant did?
I don't believe I have, so I'll take a look. Thank you.
They're right here.
Uh, Ray, if uh, if you can.
We can show you.
They're on our website, the planning board.
But because you're the host, Ray, so I can't do a screen share. So if you if you release if you make me post again, uh, let me see if I can reclaim.
Uh, I I have, I have, I have the website here. I can, I can look at them offline.
Okay, yeah, if you, yeah, it's on the planning board site. Also, it's under select board. There's a link on the left saying select board, open session, meeting packets. And tonight's packet has all of the materials that are before the board.
Yeah, the planning board MBTA website is under construction. Tomorrow.
Re reconstruction.
Yes, yeah. Ian and Tim, do you feel ready to vote, or would you like to wait for the traffic study? No comment?
I'm interested in the traffic study um for both as a comparative matter.
I think I'm in the same boat.
Okay. So Ray.
Well, the the majority of board members are not ready to vote.
Yeah.
So therefore, I don't think we can.
Okay, very good. Could I just remind you, there are other things to choose, be choosing on this too. It's the maximum number of acreage, and also you need to look at your site plan language, and you can wait until you choose the um parcel to do that, or you could do it earlier.
Well, we we can do that at the planning board.
Yeah, that's a planning board matter.
I do have one question for for both boards is uh is the um, really, I guess for the planning board, would you prefer when you open the public hearing for this zoning, whether that's in February or March, or or even later, if it goes to the fall? Would you prefer to open that hearing at a time that both sites are still on the table? Or would you prefer to have narrowed it before you open the public hearing? Cuz I think that's gonna inform the deadlines that we set. This is my statement as a member, not as the chair. Um, I would prefer to have it down to one site, and what I really want from the traffic study is the simple question, you know, which site has the worst impact for the majority of residents in West Newbury? I mean, in plain language, I think we're gonna get similar, you know, what do you call it? Generated, yeah, trips and all that kinda stuff, but I mean, it's very clear to some people at this meeting, both in the public and in some here that, you know, done is far worse than that. But uh, if I think we need to be able to go into, even if we've selected the site, I think we need to be able to go into that public hearing and saying somebody who knows this stuff well, looked at both sites and said they're the same, this one is clearly, or this one is clearly worse for the town residents overall.
Okay. So next steps, um, I guess, you know.
I'm just wondering if we can, if, you know, in light I'm just wondering I would think that a a a good traffic engineer would be able to give us that answer with a very short amount of time spent. Yeah, cuz I mean, they can see the roads, they've got to, we've already got traffic counts. And I think somebody who knows this stuff well. I mean, cuz we we, I think we're all speculating and figuring that we know, but I think you need somebody with good bona bonas. They can, they can just say, yeah, or that's a toss up, you know what I mean?
Where are the 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 traffic count numbers? Where were they actually taken? I think I saw on that at one point or some reference, but I don't recall where.
Yeah, there were, there were a number of sets of counts. Some, some were just pure uh volume counts in terms of actual turning movements. That was on a subset of intersections. I believe the scope uh included three intersections, and I wanna say it included uh, Bridge Street, Church Street, and Maple, I believe. But but that's gonna be one. Yeah, I I think that one of the issues in in engaging a new person, new new engineer is is the data that's collected gonna be sufficient for them to
Right.
give us that answer, or are they gonna feel the need to do their own counts? Oh God, no. Well, that's, that's my, yeah. Yeah, I mean, when you put in the request or proposal, you say, look.
This is what we get.
We got this based on, based on, you know, these segments along the arterial. You know, and the traffic counts on this arterial. Um, and then you get Bridge Street here and then you get these, you know. Yeah, so they they have volume counts both roughly at the Groveland line, the Newburyport line. And then there's a number of other more uh kind of specific intersection counts. So I I tend to agree that batching all the data that we have and attaching that to the RFQ to let people know what they're working with and and to know that they don't have to. Yeah, and and cuz that's gonna be part of what would take the time. It shouldn't need to take the time cuz I've been doing its quarter study for two years. Yeah, I mean, if I, if if I if if I'm, so one of my areas of expertise is bridge design, and one of the things you look at is how bouncy the bridge is. And they run these numbers. And I tell my students, you get it in three categories. This bridge is too bouncy. You know, it's gonna scare people, even if it's safe.
Is this the three middle? No.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, sorta. This bridge, this bridge is clearly no good. It's too flexible. This bridge is clearly stiff enough. And then the middle one is ah, which means you should go make it stiffer, right?
Yeah.
When it comes to this traffic count, I think a person experienced in this area will be able to look at these numbers and look on a map and look where the high school is and the post office and, you know, the Rox Village Bridge and everything. And based on those numbers, this person will be able to do the same thing. This site is clearly worse. Ah, they're about the same, or that site is clearly.
I would hope so. I mean.
And I don't think it would take, you know, twenty hours of work to do it.
When do we need this information by in order to meet the public hearing schedule?
I think Katrina and I can work backwards from the hearing and where.
So the hearing that's that's agreed on late February is where?
Could I just read from my notes from the one thirteen quarter meeting?
Yeah.
That the metro transportation plan was done by MVMP. Oh, I don't know who that is. But they did crash data, and along Main Street, typically in West Newbury, there is one crash per year. Um, uh, on Bridge Street, there's an average of two per year. So they they characterize it as not having a high crash. Three sites that they counted, at the west end of town, they said that seventy-six hundred vehicles came into town. In the town center, they calculated seventy-eight hundred cars a day. And in the east end, which I believe was at Emery Lane, they said there were ten thousand six hundred cars per day.
Yeah, so you're you're picking up those extra cars, there's people come onto Main Street. Principally have guests coming up from Bridge. Some, you know, low level feeding from.
We're also getting those thousand cars a day, or whatever the number was that used to take Enwell once again, presumably. I I, you know, I'm I'm one of those people, I, you know, to go to downtown Newburyport, to go to most by step in Newburyport with that bridge. I would take that bridge, without that bridge, I I take Chase Street to Main Street to to Newburyport. So.
Yeah, overly complicated. Yeah, but the bottom line is there's the, I mean, these volume numbers are are recent, they're good, and they're very close to both sites. Yeah, yeah. And and while that is the data they presented, and those are the click counts I referenced, in addition to that, and I don't believe it was part of what was presented, but they also did turning movement counts at three intersections.
Right.
So in addition to kind of the raw volume counts, they also did turning movement counts. Uh, that, and I, like I said, I believe that was Bridge, Church, and Maple, but I I could be kidding. Might have been Basher. But we we had to pick three. But it wouldn't, so that might be relevant to the uh done property, might not be relevant to the nap property in terms of relative impact, but.
I I have one, not traffic related, if you want me. I'm hoping that we all can get, you know, on the same page. It's possible to maybe a majority wants one side or the other. One of the the comments that MBPC made was that it it seemed like not all the public officials were supportive of of MBTA.
In other towns are here.
Yes.
In other towns.
In other towns.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't want to put everybody on the spot, but I I I'm just throwing that out there that I think the next time we meet, and I'm gonna suggest it's either late February, late late January, early February. Um, that, you know, we we maybe we have a traffic stuff, but we should all be prepared to lay it out there that, yeah, we're we're on board or or not.
I mean, whether or not we favor
MBT. Supporting MBTA.
Supporting, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I don't think it's slightly different. I'm with this, there are three levels of issues that have to be sorted out. One is do you support the state mandating and the town telling you when you have to do like that?
Yeah.
The second issue is the site, one or the other, and the third issue, do you agree with the zoning regulations as presented?
Yeah, that's that's fair. That's good. That's that's fair. And I think by then, we we should hopefully have Supreme Judicial Court opinion that could help weigh on our thoughts.
So would that weigh on your thoughts, or are you anticipating it would weigh on residents' thoughts?
Oh, I think very clearly it'll weigh on residents' thoughts.
Right.
For me, no, I I'll tell you, I I'm very supportive. And and I I think in particular, um, I I, we need, this is smaller housing. We need smaller housing. You know, we've all seen the last couple of years, the the parcels that have been done by Wright, one and a half million and up is what's being built.
And they don't need that. We need options, so some people, like like so, I'm not looking to sell my house, but that if you wanna get out of your three and four bedroom house, then maybe you want us this. Look at the two projects, the cottage projects that were done in town here.
Thirty-four units apiece for roughly. They sold out incredibly quickly. There's demand for that. And and that that's what we need. And yes, I know it's more dense and it's got more people, but we really don't need the the four bedroom mega structures.
Yeah, I also.
That's my opinion. People can disagree.
I agree. There there's also, I think, Chris, in my mind, there's, there's, there's a a difference there. Like, you could be vehemently against the state doing this sort of mandate and imposing their will on the town. But that's, that to me is a separate issue. On once that mandate is issued, on how I as a public official gotta advocate or don't advocate for performance with that. You know? So I might not like the fact that we gotta deal with the MBTA. But here it is. So I feel like I got, I've got it's my responsibility to put the best ideas forward for the town, and then it's up to the the town as a whole to vote.
That's what it'll come down to is town meeting. Brad was, you know, saying politically which one. Doesn't matter what we think. Town meeting will vote it.
Or not.
Whatever, I found about the time in town, same as your duration, almost every time the town meeting gets it right, whether I agree or not, it's almost irrelevant. They do a really good job of getting the hard issues correct. So to your point, I am so offended with the state, I call extortion, is what I call it. They're extorting, well, they really are, if you look up the legal definition.
You do this, you do this, or you lose money.
That's what it is. The board, she went to a decision for a financial gain. So personally, I'm so offended by it, but I understand that we need to let the town meeting vote on it. And I'm not gonna let to torpedo it. I'm not sure I'll fully embrace it and endorse it. So that's the best I think we can do. You know, give them the facts and give them the
Yeah.
your zoning. Um, I don't agree with all the zoning. That's something that you guys develop, so let the town decide.
I think people respect that. You know, you 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 I think you can, you can, you can have that point of view and then this.
I'm gonna make the one caveat, and I agree with what was Rob Stoudt in the conversation, on one parcel. Until it's defined how that one parcel, I can't support anything. Because to to dilute or multiply a potential problem, we don't know how, we hope it's gonna end up well at the end of the day. Um, but to have two projects to try at some point, you know, to see, I think it's better to have one.
Well, one one of the most valuable things that this whole product, that I I've taken out of this whole process in the last over the hearing, yeah. Well, one of the most valuable things that this whole product that I I've taken out of this whole process in the last over hearing had was the idea, it was clear that what we need to do is we need to comply with the MBTA. But not
Overcome.
Further.
Yeah. So, uh, let me ask you, going forward, what role use? I mean, I know this is the planning board does the public hearing. Would it be advantageous to have the select board there as well as part?
Well, I I think is, I think Brian was saying, I think we need to do this again.
Once we have all the information.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And if we could, if we could somehow, you know, call in a favor with some of these people and and just just get that, you know, pay them a fair amount, but just using your expertise, here's the deal.
Right. So was that good, Chris? I I think it's been really helpful. I I now have made up my mind and I wasn't sure, so.
Well, keep your mind a little open.
You gotta keep it open.
Couple more fast drifts in, sit down a little bit.
I doubt there's very much.
Um, are we all of the same mind, though, that we do need to build affordable housing in town?
Uh, no, no, this is not affordable housing.
Excuse me, that we can build
Relatively small.
Smaller houses.
The the town would benefit from a diversification of housing available?
Yes. I'd like us to all agree on that.
If there's there's methods to do that, there's overlay districts that that you could put down that that require housing being of a certain size.
Well, I I'll just I'll just point out.
Forty five. Forty five.
There is, anyway. But the the town, this town has been progressive that way because you've always had the duplex thing by right.
No, no, I understand.
And then we beat the state.
There is a prohibition, there's a prohibition on the zoning act on on towns prescribing the the size of a house. Uh, there's there that starter home policy a couple of years ago was was the one time. But generally, a town does not have any legal authority to require a house to be one size or another.
Uh, the ADUs are loaded.
That's, things have changed in the last couple of years, but but in terms of the underlying law, that's been the the base, you know. But yeah, starter homes is different, ADUs is different. Uh, but even forty yard, that spoke to density. It did not speak to to the size of the house.
But that's that's question more about, isn't there additional stuff we can be doing in town beyond the MBTA?
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, so we should resolve that this doesn't end the need for diversity.
Okay.
Right.
In some manner, shape or form.
Yeah. But we, you know, I feel like now we're interviewing, you know, it's just, it's the game in front of us.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But just.
This is a nice option. This is a great thing to consider.
Ann or Tim, any parting thoughts?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
No, I'm generally in agreement with what's being said. Let's get the darn traffic study done and reconvene.
All right, sounds good. All right.
Thank you.
Good luck. Everybody.
Thank you.
Any motion to adjourn? For both courts?
I'll go out.
There can't be discussion. All is in favor?